Are we good? Okay. Okay. Good evening. Thank you for coming to the City Council meeting and joining us on Zoom for the August 21st, 2024 council meeting. So we have no report out from our closed session, but we're now here. And so, good evening and thank you for viewing the August 21st meeting of the City Council of Arcata. And so, the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges the lands we are located on are unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known as the Wiat language as gunini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. The past actions by local, state, federal governments remove the Wiat's and other indigenous people from the land, threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settlers colonialism. So would you like to join me, please, for the flag salute? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Stillman.
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Mayor Matthews is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. So we happen to, under ceremony manners, we have a proclamation recognizing September 8th, the 14th, 2024, as Suicide Prevention Week. And as a former suicide prevention volunteer, I will read it. Whereas suicide is a national and statewide public health problem, and suicide prevention is a national and statewide responsibility. And whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in the United States, the third leading cause of death among 15 and 24 years, and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 25 and 34. And whereas it's estimated that in 2025, there are 1.6 million suicide attempts, over 49,000 people die by suicide in the United States, with 4,148 of those deaths occurring in California. And whereas over 90% of the people who die by suicide have been diagnosed and treated both mental health conditions, although often those conditions are not recognized or treated. And whereas the organizations such as the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide. And through research, education, advocacy, and resources for those who have lost someone to suicide, or who struggle and urge that we recognize suicide as a preventable national and state public health problem, and declare suicide prevention to be a priority. Acknowledge that no single suicide prevention program or effort will be appropriate for all populations or communities. Address the disparity in access to mental health care for underserved and underrepresented groups and advocates for ending these disparities. And fund new suicide research to support culturally informed and evidence-based mental health care and services. Encourage the initiatives in Arcata based on the goals contained in the National Strategy for Suicide Prevention and the 2024 California Suicide Prevention Plan. And promote the awareness that there is no single cause for suicide, that suicide often occurs when stressors exceed the coping abilities of someone struggling with mental health conditions. And develop and implement strategies to improve and increase access to quality mental health, substance abuse, suicide prevention services, and programs. And continue advocacy to ensure we will reimage or comprehensively suicide mental health, substance use crisis response system that builds on the historic new 988 number for suicide and crisis lifeline. Therefore, be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes September 8th Death Dash the 14th, 2024, as Suicide Prevention Week, and recognize September 20th as the World Suicide Prevention Day, dated August 21st, 2024, and signed by myself, and is going to be accepted by Heather Fredis. And Heather, are you pre-? Oh, thank you very much. And you've [applause] and you definitely have an opportunity to speak. And I'm going to hand this to Sarah. She'll bring it to you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for adopting this proclamation, recognizing these priorities for suicide prevention. I wanted to, well, I should introduce myself. So my name's Heather Fredis. I am the 2024 Arcata Out of the Darkness Community Walk Chair, and I serve as a Board Secretary for the Greater San Francisco Area Chapter. That is operating quite a big chapter because this stems all the way up here. So with that, we have our upcoming 2024 Arcata Out of the Darkness Community Walk that we host annually since 2015. And that will be hosted on September 8th, which begins this week for Suicide Prevention Week. And it begins and ends on the Arcata Plaza. It's approximately like two miles throughout Arcata. It's a pretty easy walk. It's a free public event for people to come. And it helps create a community of, I'd say, healing for a lot of people who've been impacted by these issues in our community. We have people from all over who come. And it also shares community resources so people can learn about what we have in our community for mental health and suicide prevention. It's a really great opportunity. It's only a few hours long, and begins and ends on the Arcata Plaza. Show up around nine in the morning, nine to 10:00, and we have an opening ceremony with some local speakers. So I have flyers if anybody wants any. Thank you.
So we will have a report this evening, and it'll be from the Transportation Safety Committee. And thank you very much for doing this.
Everyone, my name is Genevieve Serna. I'm the Chair of the Arcata Transportation Safety Committee. Before I begin, I just want to give a big thank you to Dave Ryan, who was our previous Chair. He served on the committee for many years, but unfortunately had to step away very recently. So just wanted to give a big thank you to him before we continued. So for anyone who's unfamiliar, the Arcata Transportation Safety Committee, or TSC, serves the primary function of reviewing transportation matters and making recommendations to the council and commissions and city staff as appropriate. Over the last year, since the last report was given last September, we've had eight regular meetings. The report says seven, but as of yesterday, we've had eight. And since that time, we've reviewed a number of things. I won't go over the report in its entirety. It is in the agenda packet for anybody who wants to take a look at it, but I'll [inaudible]. We do receive written and oral communication at our committee meetings. Over this last year, we've seen some repeated requests to address certain things, that being slowing speeds of vehicles through the Arcata marsh, not just to protect those who are enjoying, you know, recreation in the area, but specifically for our wonderful wildlife that lives down there on South Chi. Speeding concerns around local schools, and then increased visibility on 8th and 9th. There is a comment in here about closing the gap in the bike lane between 8th, on H Street, between 16th and 17th, which thankfully is something that was addressed this year. So it's good to see some movement on some of the things that the community has brought forward. Thank you for that. We also received collision data from Lieutenant Todd Docweiler of Arcata PD. We've also started implementing, or are going to begin implementing, reviewing street stories. And for anyone who's unfamiliar with what street stories is, it's a self-reporting tool for anyone who experiences either a crash, near miss, a hazard, or even safe zones in a city. And that self-reporting allows us to have a different kind of narrative that's not always offered in police reports. So next month, September, will be the first time that one of our members, Nia Tico, is going to be bringing forward a street story report with hopefully some, you know, comments that have been made by the public that we can use to address some problem areas. We also received transit reports from Nature Cotry. So over this last year, we've seen the addition of two additional bus routes, the Green and Gold Route, in collaboration with Cal Poly Humboldt. After 2020 transit, you know, organizations nationwide saw a really steep decline in ridership due to pandemic shutdowns and just people utilizing those systems less. But we're very happy to say that in the City of Arcata, not only have we returned to pandemic levels of ridership, but exceeded those levels of ridership. So that's been very wonderful to see. So some policies that we reviewed throughout the year. [inaudible] we got to see and is now, you know, nestled nicely into the general plan, which has kind of been, you know, the big overarching project for the city, I think. Another one that you guys will be reviewing this evening is the Local Road Safety Plan. That's another one that's been in the works with city staff and community, you know, input for a couple of years. So it's good to see that one finally come in front of the public and get discussed. So as we look into the coming year, there's a couple of things, again, that we were looking forward to discussing, some very fun, exciting, and very worthwhile things to note. Commemorating 1 million trips on the Bay Trail North. It's a very well-loved trail, and so we want to recognize that the community has used that trail and it's become a very loved part of the city. And also reviewing the Arcata Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan. The last time that plan has gone through an update was back in 2010. So it's, you know, well good in time for us to kind of bring that document up to speed on what our future goals for pedestrian and bicycle safety are. In addition to that, that plan, it's been recommended that, in order to elevate our city's status as a bicycle-friendly community from silver to gold, that that plan get updated. So that's, you know, Designations for the City. So yeah, thank you. Any questions?
Well, thank you, Genevieve. Do you have a question?
I had a comment. I'm really excited to hear that Street Story is also in Spanish. So that's something cool. And also just to thank you for all of your extensive work, and I know you guys are really busy, but I was hoping that you might be able to add to one of your goals. Upcoming is to look at Valley West. I know that Colin Fisk from CRTP wrote an article in the Mad River Union about some of the ongoing challenges in Valley West North Arcata, which these challenges are continuing now that we're growing. And also just in particular, Jean Toley Lane, AKA is also known as Arcata Speedway. So again, thank you for all the hard work you do.
Sarah?
No question. But yeah, thank you guys just so much for all you do. I mean, the TSC has been definitely, you know, done a lot of work through general plan and gateway and all of that. And so we appreciate it, and it's kind of nice and full circle that we're doing Local Road Safety Plan tonight, and you guys are here. And so, thank you so much.
Stacy?
Thank you.
Thank you very much this evening. So the next item on the agenda for Council and Staff Reports, number A, will be continued until our next regular meeting. And then we go on to Staff Reports. Are there any staff reports?
I'll just say that it's a pleasure to be here, and this is my first meeting at the Arcata, for the Arcata City Council. And it's already been a really busy week, and I've been really grateful to have Karen Deemer showing me the ropes and making introductions and then participating with her regularly scheduled meeting with council members and department heads. And so I'm really looking forward to getting to know everybody and serving the community. And so I'm glad to be here, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Are there any other staff reports? Okay, we'll go on. Sarah, do you want to say anything from the, as far as council members?
Yeah, I can start. So a few updates from my various liaisons and committees. Equity Arcata, this upcoming Friday, as part of Cal Poly Welcome Week at the D Street Community Center, from 4:00 to 6:00, is going to be an event called Arcata Reflections. They're going to be showing a short film called Unsolved Hate about the murder of David Josiah Lawson. And then I've also been invited to participate on the panel for that event, to kind of represent Equity Arcata as co-chair, and just offer some of the city's perspective on what we've been doing to, you know, advance equity and make students feel safe and comfortable in Arcata. And I'll be on that panel along with a couple folks from ODEI and one of our Sage Fellows, which is the student, kind of student side of ODEI and of Equity Arcata on campus there and working with the different, you know, student affinity groups. So that's going to be a great event, again, this Friday at the D Street Community Center, 4:00 to 6:00. And then also Equity Arcata will be having their first Home Away from Home potluck of the fall semester on September 8th at 5:00 PM. And then, don't forget that the Eye Block Party is on Labor Day. That's September 2nd. It starts at noon. They're also looking for volunteers. And I have an email I've been meaning to send it to you guys, but they're looking for maybe a city council member coleslaw-making party. So if you're interested in volunteering the day before, let me know. We can talk about it. But they're looking for volunteers, both for setup, day of, and also to make coleslaw the night before. So if you are interested, let me know, or, you know, reach out. And then lastly, exciting news from RCA. This happened a couple weeks ago, but it's finally out, and we're ready to announce it. We kind of were one of the lead agencies on writing a Department of Energy GRIP grant, which we worked on with SHOTS Energy Research Center, and then the Karuk, Yurak, Hoopa, and Blue Lake Tribes. And so the grant's gonna, I can't even tell you what the number, I think it's like 86 million. It's a lot of money, to build microgrids out on each of those tribal lands and give each of those tribes their own [inaudible]. So that's really exciting. It's going to be a big project and take a lot of coordination from both federal and state Department of Energy, PG&E, RCA, SHOTS, a lot of different partners. So it's really exciting and a That's all I got.
Thank you. Stacy?
Thank you. So the Third Annual Oban Festival was in the Creamery District, and really wonderful. So I'm appreciative to, happy for putting that on, and grateful that it's in Arcata. And then I did have They, we did wrap up the Keys Campaign, which hopefully some of you maybe saw on social media. It was a month-long campaign. There was a little bit of extra REAP money available, and so we, we used it for our pro-housing campaign on social media, and it was really well-done. So, and it's still obviously out there and floating around, so check it out, be sure to share it. It's got some very powerful stories on it. And then, you know, we'll be seeing the, the work on the 101 at Indianola where the undercrossing's going to go. So that will continue to shift and change as the progress, the project moves forward. So there will be another lane shift so that they can work on a different part of it. So again, just reminding people to be patient. It will be completed someday, and it'll be amazing and safe, but you know, it's, people get annoyed, I get it. It's always changing, and you have to drive even slower through there. And we did also nominate, the Great Redwood Trail was looking for, it was a rotation for a board member, and it was our county's turn to nominate some, someone for that. And so Deborah Garns, the mayor of Rio Del, was interested, and we nominated her. And she, I think it'd be hard-pressed to find anybody more excited than she is about the trail, so she is the right person for that job. So she is very grateful and excited to be on that board. And that's what I've got.
Thank you. Kimberly?
I just wanted to give you an update on Carlson Park. The 2.4 million park project is almost complete. We will have an official ribbon cutting on September 13th at 5:30. Also, some exciting upcoming events. We're going to have Food Truck Fridays at Carlson Park, which is presented by Arcata Park and Rec, with the first one on the Friday, the 13th, right at the same time as the ribbon cutting, also at 5:30. A follow-up one will happen on the 27th, and they go until sunset, so we hope to see you there. And speaking of events, Arcata Park and Rec will also be bringing to the Valley West Community, Community Hoop Nights, both Monday and Wednesday through the month of September, beginning September 4th, and ending on the 30th, also at 5:30. I'm also excited to share that the Valley East Loft Apartments are almost finished. They're looking really nice, as well as the mixed-use developments on Jean Toley and Boyd. So lots of new housing developments coming in. I have been meeting with a group with Lazy J and other Valley West residents regarding some of the Seeing on the great things that are also happening in Valley West. I have been continuing my education on my recent CERT training, the Community Emergency Response Team, that City Council, City Arcata funded for Arcata residents and everyone else that wants to attend. And I also added two more disaster preparedness all-day trainings, a disaster preparedness academy, as well as Stop the Bleed, Save a Life course through the American College of Surgeons Committee on Trauma. So it's not a matter of if we're going to have a disaster, but it's just a matter of when. So I just can't emphasize enough that you be prepared. So keep your eyes open because we're going to be doing some block party disaster preparedness block parties, just to help people get educated on how you can be ready for that emergency disaster when it happens. What else can I tell you? Oh, I've done over 40 hours of this disaster preparedness training the last past several weeks. I think I'll take a little break from that. Today, I attended the city's homeless housing working group. We received some updates from Arcata House Partnership, as well as some updates on the warming centers countywide that will be opening as we get closer to the winter season. Lots of hard work are going on behind the scenes with the various organizations, such as Arcata House Partnership and the county, to address the needs of our unhoused community. I was just recently appointed to a new ad hoc committee to explore ways to increase in community engagement and outreach with the aim to ensure diversity, equity, and inclusion in the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission programming. And I attended a Redwood Region Economic Development Commission Got to approve a local loan here for Arcata business, so that was exciting. And also the regular monthly meeting for REDAC, Redwood Region Economic Development Commission, will be meeting next Monday, so I'll report on that on our next city council meeting. And then also, not this Sunday, but the following Sunday, Labor Day weekend, there will be on, from 9:00 to 11:00, if you want to join us, and send a little love to Valley West. We're doing a community cleanup. And then also Saturday, 24th, this Saturday, at 4:00 PM until midnight, at the Table Bluff, Lolita is Wiat Day. And there will be bear dancers, kaluza feather dancing, drum groups, and more. And there will be no charge for entry, so if you want to have dinner, do bring yourself $20, because it's going to be a pretty awesome dinner there. So that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. So I just want you to know I'm already a volunteer for the I Street Block Party. They've already called me, and so I've taken over the same role I normally do there. I wanted to, you know, I was just, saw this brochure again, for the, the Arcata Community Ambassador Program update. And I really want to thank you, Stacy, for coming up with this concept. And it was Stacy that sort of thought we should use some of our ARPA funds for that. And I, it's very valuable, and I know that you're interested in having it in Valley West, but nevertheless, it's, I think it's been excellent, and thank you for that. I'm on Humboldt Transit Authority, and what I've been working on is, is the, is dealing with the Earth Center. And I think that's moving quite fast and moving along, and I'm helping them with, I go to all the meetings that are dealing with the development of the center, so, of the building. So that's, that's what I've done there. And are there any other reports or any other comments? Early communications, oral communications. Do we have anyone that would like to speak?
Hi, my name's Kevin Johnson. I'm a 43-year resident of Arcata. I live on Old Arcata Road. It's nice to see bike lanes there now. I feel safe riding to work now. I had an incident on Saturday that I wanted to share with you. I was riding to work and coming into Sunny Bray on Old Arcata Road, Samoa Boulevard. I crossed over, I was in the bike lane, I crossed over Crescent Way. Now Crescent Way is the road that comes into Old Arcata Road. Samoa Boulevard is right by the Mexican restaurant. It's just a merging lane. So I was in the bike lane. A car just came right barreling down into that merging lane without looking. I had to swerve to the left. I hit a patch of gravel that's in the bike lane, and I went down at about 20 miles an hour onto my shoulder and my ribs. I'm just starting to recover from that, those injuries since Saturday. The woman stopped, said, "Oh, I didn't see you, I'm sorry," and then left. I made an incident report about it, and the officer said, "Oh yeah, we just had another bicycle incident right there at that same place." Now Crescent Way is probably in the Sunny Bray area, when I feel, one of the most dangerous places, because people merge into that lane [inaudible] over bicycle path, and a lot of times people aren't looking behind them, because you have to merge and turn your head to see if other cars are coming. You know, it seems like, I don't know the past incident reports of that area, but I'm always cautious going through there, and I do see other cars, even as a driver, you know, going, coming out through that or going on Old Arcata Road. It always seems like a really sketchy place. There's not a lot of flow coming down out of, out of Sunny Bray, so my suggestion is put a stop sign there, to stop people there so that they can look both sides to make sure that there's no pedestrians, there's no bicyclists, and there's no other cars coming. I do see many people stop. It's a yield, and I do see many people stop and look and proceed. But there's a lot of other people, like the incident that just happened to me [inaudible] and they're not looking. They're not paying attention. And they're coming out of Sunny Bray pretty fast. And I was lucky, even though it's taken me about five days to recover from my injuries. So that's what I have to say.
Well, thank you, Kevin. And I'm sorry that happened to you, and I'm assuming that there will be a note made of that, and we can look into that.
Thank you.
And I know when I come out of there, you always slow really slow
Yeah.
to look to the left and the right before you proceed.
Yeah, most people are good at that. You know, there's the people that forget, you know, maybe they forgot, or they just don't do it.
They just go.
It just has, you know, I mean, it's a, you know, a dice roll sometimes crossing through there. And, you know, there was another incident a couple days later, right there, with a bicyclist.
So thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that would like to be, speak at oral communications? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We don't have anybody wishing to speak on Zoom.
Thank you. Then we'll close oral communications. Item A, the city clerk requested this item be pulled to correct the spelling of the chief eminence name from Evans to Emmons, and recorded it in the, in item D, the Council and Staff Reports from this meeting. So is that a possibility that we can pull that, or make that correction and then approve it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to amend the spelling from Evans to
I will second that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this? Well, thank you very much. Can we all vote? A, yea or nay? Yea?
We're doing it by order now. That's my bad.
Oh, well, okay. But I'm reading from this new script I have, so it may be out of order according to the, but anyway, I'm following the script. So you want to call roll, or you just think we can just say yes?
It would not need to be a roll call motion. I'm not sure if public comment needs to be taken on it first, though.
Yeah, I feel like we need to take public comment on the whole consent calendar first, because that's what we do, and then pull it and then vote.
Yeah, but that's not how this is listed, so I'm so sorry. Okay. Oh, maybe I turned the wrong page. It's very confusing.
And you probably
I'm not used to having things this way. So anyhow, okay. Is there any, all right, I'll just say, the consent calendar, all items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. A, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of August 7th, 2025, four. B, bi-weekly reports on disbursements. C, award a contract to housing tools in the amount not to exceed $232,500 for the Valley West Community Center Assessment Project, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. D, approve the contract with the invoice cloud for web-based invoice presentation and processing, and authorize the city manager processing, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. And E, approve the project plans for the Arcata Ballpark Improvement Project. Is there anyone that would like to pull anything from the agenda?
I'd like to pull Item A. See, this is the order we should have.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to pull Item C, but I did want to just say I'm real excited about this project. While it's not a local organization that will be doing it, they are Spanish-speaking, they're going to be doing community engagement, both in Spanish and English, and yeah, I'm looking forward to that.
That'll be excellent. Okay, and so you're pulling number A, could you tell me why you would like to pull Item A?
Should we take public comment on the entire consent calendar first?
Okay. Is there anyone, you want to speak in the public? Would you like?
Still getting used to it, the new system, Alex, like you are. But I do am curious on consent calendar items, when there's a financial component that we're talking about, is there, or could there be a limit to the amount of money that you're approving in a consent calendar way on items, so that there's a threshold of like, under $10,000, or anything over $10,000, or maybe have to be broader than $50,000? But I kind of find it hard to just go consent calendar on items that are huge amounts of money. And I just sort of wonder if that could be considered.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar, Items B through E.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, signal a saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And then, yeah, so on Item A, just to update the spelling under the staff reports, Item D, of, it was written Chief Evans to Chief Emmons.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any comments? Anyone in the council chambers want to speak on that item? Okay, all those in favor, signal a saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Old Business, introduce ordinance number 1571, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending Chapter 5 Residential Rental Inspection Program of Title, five, six, seven, eight, Building Regulations of the Arcata Municipal Code, and waive reading of the text and consent to read only by title. So can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate being back here, I feel like I was just here. And so I'll keep this real brief, as we've discussed in the past, there were lots of discussions from the community regarding unforeseen difficulties with the ordinance the way it was written. So the definitions were added for occupant, which would have seemed obvious, but it came up a couple of times. Owner occupied, similarly, the main thing with owner occupied is just defining that it's in line with state definitions, six months or more. Tenant, vacant, and vacation, there was just some properties that, well, is it vacant, or is it a vacation home? So those are now defined. The only scope that was added was the special exemption that we talked about. It's a properties granted special exemption waiver by the city manager or their designee. The fee exemption is similar, there's one form for both, it's one of the exhibits. If the issue that somebody has is not with the idea of getting an inspection, but just simply the fact that they shouldn't, they feel like they shouldn't have to pay for it, our drive is life safety, so that is now a process that we can approve. The appeals process, we modified due to, or on the advice of council, just based, legal council. To be to a board, not an individual, so city council is to replace city manager. And then the exhibits, I believe you should have copies of, a owner occupied affidavit, which is just a form that somebody is attesting to say, yes, I am the owner of the property, and I live there for more than six months of the year. Vacant property affidavit is basically the same, except I, the owner of the property, certify that when I'm not living in my house, it is vacant. And then the third exhibit is the special exemption and/or fee waiver, that's the other attachment there. And that's really it, it's the same ordinance, same intention, just with some clarifications. Any questions, I'm happy to answer, thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council?
I don't have a question, but first of all, just thank you, Joe, and this looks great, and it was kind of, I think I was the one that made the motion that was like, I want you to be able to decide, so this encapsulates that well, and, you know, you're the one looking at these properties, your department, and seeing them, and really knows what's going on on the ground. The one thing that I would be interested to just see in the future, is just, you know, every, every year or so to kind of report back, and I would just be curious to see how many exemptions there are, who is, who are filing for exemptions, and what exemptions they're getting, and just to start to gather some of that data, to see where we can kind of tighten up some of these, you know, regulations if we need to, or not. So just thank you so much, and I'm excited that this program's up and running, and it's just been such a great thing for tenants in Arcata, and seeing, you know, some of the testaments that you shared last time were really awesome, so thank you.
Thank you, and we, I've made note that when we give our next update, I will include any exemptions that we have approved. And obviously, anytime anybody wants an update, we will give it to you, thank you.
Thank you. Stacy?
Thank you, and I was just wondering, I know most folks have come into compliance on their own, and how's it going with the rest of the bunch?
Yeah, we're just over 20 that are, 20 properties that are not in compliance. I feel like that's pretty good, considering we started with well over 2,000. Yeah, I'm happy with that so far, we're, we're really, really trying to get them in, and hopefully we can clean that up, and the next staff report will say zero.
Well, 20 is pretty amazing.
Pretty good, yeah.
Thank you.
Could I just clarify, when you say compliance, that's getting folks registered, is that correct?
Yes, that.
And I'm assuming that mobile homes are also part of the rental inspection, yes?
They are not, they are regulated by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, so no, we are not. There have been a, I'd say, in my time, seven years, there's been maybe two or three incidents that sounded so urgent, we did voluntarily go and look, but we're in communication with the state inspector, I have their, their contact, so we always communicate with them. But they're, they're considered the authority having jurisdiction for mobile home parks.
So just because I know that there are a lot of mobile homes out there that have had longstanding issues that can be a threat to occupant safety, and just want to then speak to the public and let them know that there's a mobile home, Calhome Mobile Home Rehabilitation Program that can help bring these up to par, even replace them if necessary. And I don't know if you have to. All up the city, and see if you can get that work going.
I can definitely educate myself on that and pass that information along, and I will certainly, anybody that does come to us with questions, we turn them towards the appropriate department, the closest regional office is Reading, but they have, like I said, a local inspector that handles, I believe, from Yukaya to Del Norte, and I have their contact information as well, so I will assist as best I can, I'll make note of that.
And if anybody wants to replace their mobile home, or do those updates, then yeah, call the City of Arcata, because you can do that right here and get an application for that grant, Liz Calhome.
That is true. And what, in your information, it says that if you sold, a property was sold, and if it, within so many months, if it doesn't get transferred over from the seller to the new buyer, then the new buyer will have to go through the program and pay the additional fees. So I'm assuming that the realtors, if they understand what's going on, are letting their clients know that this has to happen, or that at least as realtors, they're doing that.
Yes, you're correct, and I would make that same assumption, I think that is a safe assumption, I've definitely fielded some questions from realtors regarding that exact scenario. And again, that would be a scenario where potentially the fee waiver could be applied, if the previous owner paid the annual registration fee, I have no problem waiving the $20 annual registration fee, if that helps. And again, the inspections are every three years, and so we would, we would kind of prorate as necessary.
Yeah, that was the one thing I was, I noticed it. And then I noticed a property that is rentals is on the market, so it made me really think about that, so thank you very much. So do you have anything you would like to say?
No, I think it's great, you know, I think the change and leaving that flexibility for the city manager to authorize an exemption for the fee or through the program, you know, I think it's just something like, we'll keep an eye on and report back when we see those, and likely it will designate the building department to be able to make those calls, but we'll all be taking a look at that as those come forward.
Thank you, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Is there anyone on Zoom?
There is nobody on Zoom with their hand raised.
Okay, thank you. Then can we have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we introduce ordinance number 1571, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending Chapter 5 Residential Rental Inspection Program of Title E, Building Regulations of the Arcata Municipal Code, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. I'll second.
Thank you very much. So is there any comments on this motion? Being none, all those in favor, signal a saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, thank you. So we'll go on to Item B, which should approve the city of Arcata's local road safety plan, LRSP, direct staff to seek funding for projects listed in the local road safety plan, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, council, members of the public, staff. So this is, I would say, follow-up of our local road safety plan, I would say. Two months ago, we were here and we gave an update on our local road safety plan. So I'll just maybe go over quickly what we have done. Local road safety plan is mainly data-driven and public feedback-driven plan that we need to have. There are two reasons to have. One is good to have a plan in place so we can implement the projects. Second, this helps us getting funding. It's one of the required documents for some of the grants to have in place to receive the funding. This is the chart, you have seen this multiple times, because every time we have given an update, we have shown this chart. This chart gives a path to implement and how to do our local road safety plan. So our program started in 2021. In 2021, we got funding through Caltrans, and we started the process. It took a little bit longer than we expected, because it took a little bit longer time to come up with a stakeholder, because it was COVID times, and it was hard to get people to form a stakeholder group. Anyhow, we were able to do a, we were able to form a good stakeholder group, and they helped us quite a bit to prepare the goals of the local road safety plan, and they helped us guide through the plan. Once the goals were set, as a staff, we worked with our consultants and used the data that we have through our police departments, SWEER, and also from Street Story, where are the locations where we should be focusing on. So based on the public feedback and safety data, we have a plan, or the map, that shows that areas that we should be looking into and try to do some improvements. And also, through the local road safety plan, in that document, they have list of proven solutions that have worked on situations like that. So we have a plan now that shows the location that we need to improve, or do some sort of improvement, and we have a proven solution that will work. So we have created a plan that we want to implement. So today, I would say, we are somewhere here, where this red car is, we have a plan based on the data and public feedback, and we want to move forward. However, we don't have money, so what we are planning to do is apply for funding. So what this, what will happen after this is, once this local road safety plan is approved, we will be applying for funding. As we are speaking, we are preparing an application for EDSP to get SEEK funding in the amount of $750,000 to do some improvements that's listed on our local road safety plan. So that is our plan. Today, here we are, and we will be implementing the solutions, and we will see, it will not happen in a day, one or two, sudden change on less collisions or all the improvements, it will take time. So what we have to do is implement those solutions that are proposed, and then see how that works. And if we need to make some changes, we will make those changes. So as one of our staff who worked on the local road safety plan, Angel, he mentioned engineering is an iterative process, so local road safety plan isn't, will be an iterative process, we will do some improvements, if that doesn't work, we'll find some other improvement that should be done at that location to reduce the collision, or whatever safety improvements we are trying to do. So with that, I will pause here and maybe ask if we have any questions, you know, we have done multiple meetings, also at the TSC last month, we gave a presentation on our local road safety plan, they approved the plan, they provided some feedback, we incorporated those feedback, and it's approved by TSC. So today, after this approval, we will be moving to next step to seek funding for those improvements that's listed in the plan, so.
Thank you. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom?
No, we don't have anybody on Zoom wishing to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you, I'll bring it back to the council then.
Oh, I just had a question, I noticed one of the events, you said that there was the bike rodeo, and I know we didn't have one this year, do you know if we plan on doing it next year? It's a popular event.
It is a popular event, this year we just had a shortage of staff, but we are planning in the future, that is one of the critical event that we need to do, just, we also have funding for next year, so we will be planning to do that.
And then also, I noticed that you did, and I commend the city for doing the survey both in Spanish and English.
Yes.
I'm hoping that when we do this again, hopefully not too long down the road, that we could have more Spanish engagement. There were 95 surveys in English, but only 18 in Spanish, so it might be that just people, you know, you only know what you know, and if they're not aware that it was available. So as we do this down the road, there will hopefully be more engagement from the Spanish-speaking community. So thank you for doing that.
Okay. I just wanted to add maybe one item is, I forgot to mention, this document is a living document or dynamic document, which means it will be updated every two to five years, and we'll see if need to make some changes, and we will do that every two to five years.
Can I just ask one more question? So will we have ongoing communicate, engagement, being that it is a living document and revisiting the community?
We are not planning to do engagement, but we could look into it if we need to do the engagement to get more feedback, but that was not the plan to do further engagement on this program.
I'm just thinking that, you know, with Cal Poly, you know, and the Craftsman Mall, we're going to have more, more vehicles on the road, so things are changing rapidly.
Thank you.
Or maybe less, depending. So anybody?
Just glad to see a lot of these hotspots on the potential project list, especially 11th, just that big, flat, straight, wide-open road that needs some crooks and curbs and bike lanes real bad. And then also, like Kimberly mentioned earlier, Gentoli from Boyd to Valley West, too, and that overcrossing, and, you know, really, especially with Carlson Park being updated, and, you know, more foot traffic probably coming over from the neighborhoods and crossing that street, that's going to be a really important one as well. So just glad to see this list, and looking forward to what projects we can start to get done once we get some funding, so thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, I just kind of wanted to talk about a couple of things. One, under mission and goals, I love number three, which is the city will strive to increase perception of roadways as public spaces for community use, other than driving, such as dining, shopping, and living. And I know we, I think that's great. We are also working on an outdoor dining ordinance to help restaurants get out, you know, out onto the sidewalk and those spaces. And then I know, you know, I'm sure each of us up here has hotspots that are, you know, burning desires for us, as well as the public. And so just to remind everyone that, I think, you know, like what you said about having proven implementation measures, but then also seeing how those work. So there is something to be said for slow and steady, and putting things into place, and seeing how they work, rather than just kind of going at things haphazardly, so just encouraging all of us to have patience and kind of know that this is a priority, and there is a list, and it can, it can be changed if needed, so thank you.
But and just a reminder, too, that like, you know, this, these lists are based on data of where there are accidents, and, you know, we might perceive that our particular corner or part of Arcata is horrible, and having the most speeding and the most accidents, but when you look at the data, you know, this is how
But when you look at the data, you know, this is how this list is prioritized. And, you know, yeah, there's a lot of bad, bad drivers all over Humboldt County and California probably in general. But, you know, to, to see that list, you know, really based in the data and, and the outreach is, is great.
Well, just kind of capitalizing on what you're saying is too, if you do perceive that your part of town isn't represented in the data, then Street Stories. And that's what I'm trying to be better at because I know that sometimes it's only when, you know, police are called or there's an incident report that it goes in. And so, and I'm really appreciative that we are looking at Street Stories. So that's something that we each can do. If we feel like our neighborhood isn't being represented the way we see it, we can go in and enter on Street Stories.
And I, I agree with that. And I'm really happy to see that we're moving forward because I look at our streets and I realize we need to, we need to deal with this crosswalk, which is fading away. And we have something else that's not quite right. And so I've been worried about the fact that this year we haven't appropriated funding for that. But I think through this program, we're going to make a lot of corrections and we're going to be able to be more, I would say, visible on the ground and be able to see what's happening. And we did get, I know Colin Fisk can't be here tonight, but he was really concerned about two high priority locations, West End Road and 11th Street, West to K Street. So I just thought I would add that.
And Councilmember Stillman, we did have somebody raise their hand after you called for public comment.
Oh, thank you.
On Zoom. If you'd like me to let them in, I could do that.
Yes, we'll take the Zoom comment now. Thank you.
Okay, Colin User, you can comment.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, pertinent to street safety for non-vehicular users and vehicular users, the segregation of hikers and bikers on a dedicated bike hike bridge over 101 and over 299 from Valley West comes to mind immediately. And the new piece of evidence I'd like to introduce tonight is that just as soon as they finished the renovation of the 299 101 interchange, just north of that interchange on 101, the fence was cut. And I can say on 299, just south of Courtyards where I live, there's a whole section of fence missing with a hard beaten path to where that fence is missing. And these are just the places that I envisioned a, a bike hike overpass to be. And obviously, it's a need, whether or not, you know, it's facilitated, people are still going to be walking out there. And so I would encourage us to consider dedicated bike hike bridges out of the south end of Valley West over 101 and over 299 for your next iteration. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
No, that was it.
Okay. Well, I just want, just, just a second. So I'm thinking that reconnecting Arcata, and that is part of what the gentleman just brought forward, is looking at some of those connections and how we can put that together during the process of reconnecting Arcata. So I really thank that speaker. And Kimberly?
Yeah, no, I concur with Colin User number one. Yeah, I met recently with Caltrans and six of their staff because these breaches in the fence are organic. They are shortcuts that just make sense to everyone, except for that it's extremely dangerous because it's on the freeway. And then also just to, you know, comment on what Alex was saying is that reconnecting Arcata, that they are looking for stakeholders. So if this is something that you're passionate about and would like to be involved in conversation and give your input, you know, get ahold of Netra. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I'm not trying to swarm you with a bunch of people, but yeah, absolutely. And then also, I think somebody was talking about outdoor spaces. I was just over in Eureka earlier today and I noticed that the Seagirl had a really cute outdoor space. And if we were to do something like that, we would of course want to have bike racks right there as well. And there was something else, and I'm trying to remember what it was. Um, oh, yeah, just the Street Story. Yeah, just, I've been putting it up on my Facebook and on Instagram, letting folks know how to get to the link. There's some videos I posted on there. If you have any difficulty using it, just go to my Arcata City Council page or my personal page. And I've been sharing it over on Arcata Community Watch, on Arcata People, Arcata Peeps. And also I put all of the links for Spanish speakers as well. So it's a really important tool. Be sure to use it. We want to make our roads safer for bikes, pedestrians, everyone.
Okay, thank you. So at that point, we have some recommend.
I'm sorry, one more thing. I know it's a living document. I promise this is the last one. But in light of what Kevin Johnson just, you know, I know things are data-driven, but I'm hoping that we can look at the data on Crescent Way and consider putting in a stop sign. It, it sounds like this might be something that, as a start of a conversation at least.
Well, that, those items would go to the Transportation Committee. And I don't know if Kevin has written a letter to them or not, but that is something the Transportation Committee would review and make a recommendation on whether that happened or not for that site.
Thank you.
Okay. I did ask if anyone wanted to speak on this. I didn't hear anyone wanting to speak on this. You've changed your mind?
Yeah.
Well, no.
You brought up Kevin Johnson and he wanted to come to the transportation meeting last night and he got to the door and it was locked, even though the meeting was still happening. So he did not, was not able to attend the transportation meeting last night because he couldn't get into the building. So that's an issue that he wanted to bring up, but he wasn't able to at this meeting. And so I'm just tagging along.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the City of Arcata's local road safety plan and direct staff to seek funding for the projects listed in the local road safety plan and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or any more discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Oral communications and written communications. The City Council values your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. And please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Joanne?
Yes. My name is Joanne McGary and I'm speaking at the end of the meeting for oral communications because I'm understanding that we only have one opportunity at the meetings to speak on items not on the agenda. So I'm waiting till the end. So that's why I'm speaking now. And I'm going to speak on items foreign and domestic. And I'm going to speak on three things. And one is flags. The middle one is resources, city resources. And the final one is US funding weapons. So the first thing is about flags. I still would love to have our earth flag just hiding, not appreciated over in the corner there, placed here at least during the meeting so that people can see it. And like I say, we pledge allegiance and we have the California flag and then put the earth flag here. I'd still love to see banners go up next to the Cal Poly banners on the lampposts. But the California flag on the Plaza flag pole is dangling in a really ugly way. And it's been that way for several days. And I don't know if it's been reported or not, but the California flag is not waving completely on the flagpole. So it has me thinking that we need to revisit our flagpole on the Plaza. And whatever happens with any appeal or anything, maybe when the time comes to know what order things are going to go in, we also plan to maybe improve that flagpole and have a regular monitoring thing. Because if flags are important to people, having one not looking too good in public, especially as students and their families are coming, is pretty interesting. So that's flags. I'm going to talk about city resources. I was up at Carlson Park today because I was going to go and try and do something at the circus tent that's on private property. But it's equipment that I guess belongs to the city. I'm not quite sure how that works. But I couldn't get into that. So went over to Carlson Park and it was surrounded by gates at the playground. But one of the fencing was open, so somebody could access that playground. And there was nobody there to monitor. I didn't see anybody playing on the playground, but that was concerning to me because we have that new playground up at Redwood Park that a lot of people are playing on, but they don't have access to bathrooms. So that's interesting. So I only have 28 seconds left on the third thing. And I'll talk about resources for the city later. But we had a resolution passed by the City Council in March, a resolution against the conflict in Gaza, Palestine, and Israel. And what was not included in that was a section that many people wanted at that time, US stop funding weapons and Israel. And I would like that resolution to be added. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody on Zoom?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much. So that moves us to the dates of future meetings. And we're going to confirm a study session with the Planning Commission on Wednesday, October 30th at 5:30 in the council chambers. We have no closed sessions tonight or closed session reports, so therefore we're adjourning. Okay?